We'll call again to order.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two minutes, any corrections? A motion to approve, you have a second question? Anything else to add? All fair to say?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda, can we add? Or subtract? Haven't got much on here, we might as well subtract too much for that, or check this month or something. I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second, all fair to say?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're gonna wait till 5:45. Approval of the LEC billing, rent, grant tree and progress payment? Any questions on that?
We're on with progress, I'm just gonna say Jeff, I'm-
It's our last one.
Is it the last one?
Okay, thank you, thank you, I wasn't sure. Figured, I've got an idea to held some up yet, I think. For make sure everything continues to work.
Working and, yeah.
Did we have a dollar figure total on everything we spent on that project? And is it in line with what we-
That's, that's, that was the, that's why it was odd. Odd dollars to make it even.
Okay, okay.
And Rob did send a spreadsheet with it.
Yeah, okay.
So this, this sheet here is, that has everything on it from last October to this October, is everything you've actually paid off?
We have two... Where there's, just where it has the progress payments, that's, that's the amounts that we paid.
Okay.
Or that is part of the dollar, like the dollar that we agreed on.
We got the final payment on here, so that must be it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and so we came in on budget or under budget?
I don't know.
The Federals were in and left, Federal Marshals were in last week and they were happy. They were gonna bring in prisoners last week, but they shied away from it because of the weather. I expect, I've heard this week, but I expect to hear something probably tomorrow morning on that. And BIA brought in fourteen last week, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Say, a motion to approve, you have a second, you have a second?
Sure.
Any other questions? We'll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Light Pond?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Prove notice of intent to evict?
I have three. The property in Bartlett. Property in the city of Devil's Lake, it would be the Jerome Dolan.
Okay.
And, let me see, we've got probably those people. Property of Mark Johnson in Laton City.
Any questions? Do you understand what we're doing?
It's just a notification.
And then how long?
Giving them a notice.
How long do they have to?
A week. From the date of the sale, it's twenty days.
Twenty days.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Do you have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Sorry.
You have a second, any other questions or discussion? Let's have a vote on that.
Light Pond?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And hopefully they come in a date before they sit here.
Something you should do there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on lodging tax.
If I can read that. I had this put on simply, Suzie from Tourism, busy with me, oh that's been a while though. The whole angle, it kinda started, she had had some inquiries from some of the business owners as well about the ability for us to put on lodging tax. It's something that was brought up in the nineteen legislative session and they gave us that ability to do so. And I said that I would put something together for us to have in front of us and that we should, I thought it was worthwhile to have the discussion on if it's something we wanna look at doing or something we don't wanna look at doing. So at least there's some, we have a, you know, at least some guidance on where we wanna go with it or don't wanna go with it. So, this is what I put together in front of you all, and Suzie kinda informed me a little bit too, but I put together this document that basically mirrors Devil's Lake, city lodging tax, with a couple little changes, but pretty close to the same thing. And it has, the only questions I would have on it are, on the administration of the fund and how the fund is structured. Right now the city commission puts all of the people on the tourism committee, so we would have to have the city change their ordinance so we could have a couple of members. Cause that's what I put on, I figured two members was reasonable. But that's what I came up with, if Suzie wants to add anything to that, that'd be great.
I did talk with Terry Johnson at the city regarding the makeup of the visitor committee and also had a board meeting this morning, so I showed them the draft of the ordinance as well. And everybody was okay with the addition of two more people that the county would put on the visitor committee, making it a committee of seven to a committee of nine. Have talked with multiple people that are out in the county as far as collecting the tax. And the majority of them, especially the ones that collect the majority of it out in the county, are in favor of it. So it would just basically put everybody kind of on the same playing field when we go out and are promoting. You know, right now, we promote everybody, but we more so promote in-city limits because that's what's funding us to be at sports shows or the, or the advertising that goes into our marketing. And so they are in favor of it.
One question that I have, and maybe it's because I'm not reading this correctly, is there a reason that this is two percent and this is one percent?
Yes, there's two separate taxes under statutory code, and that's, that's one question I would have as well. There's a strict lodging tax, so that goes on any type of rental lodging, thirty days and under. And then there's also a lodging slash restaurant tax, which is one percent, that goes on lodging, the one percent would go on, and the restaurants is also one percent. So, the lodging tax obviously would be, wouldn't affect anybody locally other than if maybe somebody was coming home, you know, maybe a relative or somebody was coming to town to stay. It wouldn't affect anybody that lives in Devil's Lake. It would, it would be put on the grocery receipts or the grocery room cost to help, you know, the tourism fund, so it wouldn't really affect any people. But the restaurant tax obviously would affect people in town. So, you can have both put on, you can have one or the other put on, you can have none put on. And then that's essentially where, you know, where I'm at on it, the discussion, that's why I wanted to put it all in front of us so we had the basis of it, so we could have a discussion and know what we were looking at if we decided to look at it, so.
And do we have any conception of what kind of revenues we'd be talking about?
Just quick numbers of what I could find. And then this, it's tough to break it down because there's really no, but basically in town right now, there's five hundred hotel rooms on the lodging portion of it. That, off of that five hundred hotel rooms, it derives a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of tax now.
Per year.
Per year, yes. So if you break that down, assuming a room costs like seventy-five dollars or something like that, you know, it, it, it's, it's, it's two percent of seventy-five dollars or whatever, you're gonna end up basically being, you know, so it's a dollar, but it's three percent in town because it matches, so it's two dollars and fifty cents or whatever, around seventy-five dollars is what the cost is. The restaurant ta, and so outside of town, not the restaurant tax, outside of town there are essentially eighty hotel rooms or cabins. So assuming that you have a similar occupancy rate to town, I figure it would maybe come in at around twenty thousand a year at the high end. On the lodging portion of it, taking that, assuming that you put the one percent restaurant tax on, that gets to that twenty thousand. The restaurant portion of it, I honestly have no clue what you would come up with, because I have no clue what the grocery receipts are on the restaurants outside of town, so. The city of Devil's Lakes last year for the restaurant, or last year I can get, was two hundred and twenty-three thousand on all the restaurants in town, on that one percent tax. So I would assume maybe not more than another twenty thousand on the restaurant portion of it. So you'd be talking an additional, maybe thirty to forty thousand dollars of total taxation that would then go to help tourism.
Now, does, does the restaurant tax apply to bars that serve food as well?
The food portion, not the alcohol portion, sure, alcohol is excluded, but any kind of food, and that's all deliberated in the under here where it says, for purposes of session, restaurant means any place where food is prepared and intended for individual portions served for consumption on or off premises and prepared includes heated prepackaged food. So any place that serves some kind of food would have that, if you put that portion on or have that one percent on there.
Well, the rooms are bringing in about twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred dollars a piece.
Something like that, yeah, I figured it back down to rooms too, because if you figured the hundred and thirty-eight down to, out of that five hundred, it's like two hundred and seventy-five dollars per room per year on the generation if I remember correctly. Of what I figured out when I was looking at it.
By the way, we've done one thirty-eight for the year.
Yeah, the body, yeah, you take the one thirty-eight divided by the five hundred, that's what each ring is essentially producing on the taxation. The reason I, I, I wanted to bring this forward too was simply like what Suzie mentioned was that whenever anybody outside, since we're a tourist destination, we have a lot of places where people stay outside of city limits. And if, if they want to be represented correctly by the tourism, it only makes sense that they should be taxed the same as somebody in town that is being represented by the tourism commission. And that's my thought process. Now, like I said, the restaurant portion of it, maybe a little bit different, but the lodging portion to me makes absolutely sense.
I would assume that people that have the eighty cabins or motel rooms outside the city, they don't have a problem with this because they want to be included in advertising, I'm sure.
And so much for, in discussions when we're talking about a term of parole, I didn't find anybody who was opposed to that.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if you look at, and this is all off the, the website, the tourism website is actually really good, it has all kinds of, all kinds of the different numbers. One establishment outside of city limits has forty-nine of those eighty, I believe, and then the other one has ten, so two of them basically have seventy-five or eighty percent of their rooms. So, you know, that's basic, I mean, it still, it affects everybody obviously, but that's kind of the breakdown.
Suzie, how many restaurants are we dealing with on the two twenty-three?
That's a, in town?
Yeah.
Ah.
Would you have a rough idea? Twenty?
Twenty-five, maybe?
Twenty-five.
Yeah. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm not-
You're probably getting about ten thousand per restaurant on average?
I'm not overly sure on that because I believe, I don't, I'm not privy to the listing of who pays into that, but I believe like the Sunixes with hot stuff pizza, some of those smaller gas stations are also paying into that. So like I said, I don't have the full list of who is and who isn't, but yeah, I'd say somewhere around that twenty-five, thirty.
How many restaurants do you think we have outside the city limits?
I would say it'd be less than ten. Yeah, you know, the biggest one would be The Cove, and I don't wanna speak for Dick Przynski, but I have had conversations with him and having a restaurant in town and out of town, I believe he would be in support of it. And I'd like to bring him here, he was out of town today for Dr.'s appointment, but yeah, I've, I've had conversations with both of those.
Not to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to be tabled.
Okay.
It's gotta be back for you.
Okay, didn't realize we were losing our time that quick.
Well, you, you don't have to say that, table. We're out of rules.
This means we went to a hearing now?
People were notified of the hearing, and now this is, this is the chance for the board on this listing. They wanna make any adjustments to the phrase that I'm using.
Are, that, do you have any problem with the new list?
Sorry, I don't give a big deal, they mentioned a problem. And it doesn't appear that the community has a whole lot of problems with it either.
No, I don't think so.
Nope.
It's just the question we always have when it comes to this time of the year, is the ones like the one in town where we put the specials on it, we still don't get anyone invited, obviously we'd like somebody to take a lot that's sitting there. You know, we dropped it last year, we still didn't get anybody to do this.
But we're still at, what is it?
Ten.
Ten.
Any other comments? We're probably good to go here then?
Yeah, we need to make a motion to approve the figures.
I'll be appraising. Okay, the motion, for that extent? So, any other discussion? All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Maybe we're done with that?
Yeah.
And go back to the lodging tax? Any other questions on the lodging tax? What do you want us to do tonight then? The party, the motions make or?
From my perspective?
What do you think, Adam?
Not necessarily a motion, but I, I just wanted to, like I said, maybe this is more formal than we needed it to be, but I wanted to put it together so at least we had an idea where we're looking.
Right, no, I think that looks good.
You know, if, you'd have to, in talking with Carrie and Candy about it, if we, if it is something we wanna look at and pursue, you know, it's no different than any other ordinance, like the alcohol ordinance. It's not a load of people, it's put into ordinance structure. So you have to go through normal ordinance, so if we wanted, wanted to move forward with it, we'd have to have a, have a hearing on it, first reading, second reading, and then, the only other question I have is if we decide to move forward after that second hearing, if we decide to move forward with it, then the effective date I have is January one, I don't know if that's something you can use or not, or if you have any clarity on that simply because I don't know how exactly that, that would be a question we'll have to figure out as we go along, but.
As far as advertising and things like that?
Yeah, well, and like, when I looked at the city of Devil's Lakes initial one, when they put it in, it had, they didn't have an effective date like structured like January one, it was sixty days after the ordinance passed. So I don't know if you have to have a certain amount of time after an ordinance is finished before it goes into effect unless it's like an emergency ordinance, I don't know the exact, and that would be a question for Carrie as well, but we don't deal with ordinance as like the city goes on a regular basis, so that would be a question we would have to get cleared up before we move forward with it, but it would, you know, it's, it's in front of us in terms of, like I said, Carrie's had her eyes on it, looked it over, she thought it looked good, she made a couple of typographical things that I screwed up, but everything was, from her aspect, looked good on it, so I mean, this is a document if we're comfortable going forward with it, that we could, we could use, I think.
She didn't know what the waiting period was, the period was thirty or?
I guess I never did ask her.
I'm sure there's some segue.
I never would ask her that question specifically.
And I believe, and I'm not sure of the answer, but I could find out, but if you were going to have the state collect it like they do for the city right now, and then they would pass it on to the county to pass on to, you know, a visitors committee, there's a date that the state's going to be ready to collect it for the counties, but I'm not sure what that is, I believe it was somewhere around that January first, but.
Yeah, and that, that's part of it, is the state has to have, you have to have so much lead time for the collection date to start so that the state has time to get their stuff put together too, because they're gonna be the ones doing the collecting for you, and then they, they do, they take a little slipper of like five percent or something.
Should we get those answers before we finalize it or? Agenda for the next meeting and hopefully, if that's what everybody wants, is to move forward with this. Kind of take it to, they wanna collect this tax so they have more revenue to have to, I'm gonna make a sign to that. Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, and I mean, just because we make a decision and move forward and we go through a hearing, go through a hearing structure, doesn't necessarily mean you have to pass that through a hearing structure, not either. If we get a bunch of people to come in and say they don't want it, we don't have to move forward. And that, that's, and I think that's kind of obviously a hearing structure. We wanna hear from the people and see what they have.
Absolutely, that's the way to find out.
I mean, if, if you guys are comfortable moving forward with it, I mean, we can, we can figure out when we wanna put a hearing together and I can ask those questions and make the changes if you're comfortable with it, it's not a problem.
Okay.
At least make sure you don't talk to Carrie about it.
So you think we'll have to put it on a hearing for the next meeting or the second one or whatever?
Well, it's up to what everybody, what everybody else would like to do, I mean, if we want more time to look over the document too, that's fine.
People are forward, I mean, the restaurants and the hotel and cabin are forward, I think.
Make sure I didn't mess anything up, I guess.
You want, you want that in a form of a motion to move forward with this?
Well, I think that's, I think technically if we're gonna do move forward, I think that's what we have to do, yeah.
Are we all right, we set up a hearing for the next meeting?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that, I'll make that a motion.
I'll side with it. Okay. A hearing, set up, a motion and a second? The next meeting, which is, fifth, if you don't remember, that's correct.
Yeah.
We're about to, we're gonna set time?
Yeah.
Did you figure it out? Anything else? Everybody seem to be all right then? Everybody heard, the report in the community, for, for this?
Everything I've ever heard is for cities.
Suzie, any comments there on what we're doing?
No, I thought it looked good, like Adam said, it kinda mirrored what the city is doing right now. So I appreciate you guys taking a look at it and putting it on the agenda for a hearing, and I talked with Adam too, and I said it helps spread the word to, to everybody that would have the potential to collect on it, to help notify that, you know, that you're gonna put it on as a hearing hopefully, which it looks like you are, to help there submit a comment or support or, or not support of it, and get you guys the full answer on it, so.
Okay, we have motion with a second, any other comments? All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your work on this, Adam and Suzie.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Wasn't that hard, I played the rascal?
Stay with Adam, it's two hearings, right?
No, so it's, it's no different than like the whole, yeah, we'll have that as a first, first reading hearing, second reading hearing. And you can make changes in between on the version off what we heard at the first hearing.
Very good, with that we move into the annual joint North Port water convention and irrigation explosion.
I guess I can give a little background of that, that's a annual thing that happens every year in the first week of December on Bismarck. It starts really in full force at Wednesday, December fourth, runs December fourth, fifth, wraps up the sixth with some, you know, and it really kind of accumulates with the awards banquet, the night of Thursday, December fifth. On there they have nomination boards for the Water Wheel Award, the Commodore Award. Recognizations, if you recall, last year was part of our nomination of nominating the Governor, Jack Dolan, for his efforts and support of Devil's Lake during the rising waters of Devil's Lake. And he is presented with the Commodore Award last year during the banquet. The Devil's Lake Joint Board also has their December meeting down there at noon on Thursday, the fifth. And then that evening we give out our Water Stewardship Award, which we're still seeking nominations for until the end of October. If anybody has a person, a project, a group that would qualify for a Water Stewardship Award, the nomination forms are in my office or on my website, they pick those up. And, yeah, and they also give out the Jameson Duschinsky Scholarship Award winners that evening, which my son is chosen to receive one of those. See?
Good for him.
Yeah. So.
Congratulations for us.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Scholarships are always a good thing.
Scholarships are always a good thing. Seven grand.
What's the difference between the Water Wheel and a Commodore?
Water Wheel is given out, they give out more of them, and the Commodore Award is given out to various select individuals, where usually it's a longstanding history of water support throughout the state, and I think it has to be approved by the governor in the state of North Dakota at the time that the award's given out. So really, if you look back in, in some of the historic presentations of that award, really some high-ranking people that ever received that in the past, either that or have long distinguishing careers in water, not only regionally but statewide kind of thing, so.
Just looking at the Water Wheel, you know, off of Devil's Lake, huh?
Yeah, yeah, there's been a lot of, a lot of people that have received that award over the years, whether it was Water Wheel or, or Water Stewardship Awards or different things like that. So like I said, we, we're taking Water Stewardship Award nominees till the end of October, and we'll, depending on the number of nominees that we get, we put together a committee and select somebody, and then the joint board generally pays for their transportation down to Bismarck and enters to the awards banquet and presents them with a nice plaque in front of their peers throughout the state. Okay, is that covered? Friday, that Friday morning, the sixth will be the next state water commission meeting as well. They kinda had a interrupted meeting on Thursday, it was scheduled in the midst of the snow getting on the last Thursday, and so they had a teleconference meeting instead of a regular meeting down in Bismarck, which worked out, I guess, for those involved and saved a lot of travel headaches.
They've turned the pumps off, huh?
Pumps been off for almost a month now, twenty-first of September, they shut them off due to high flows in the Cheyenne.
Actually they don't need no more water in the Red.
No, don't need any more water in the Red, don't need any more water in the Cheyenne. Ashtabula was distilling at twelve hundred and sixty-six CFS, no, twenty-eight hundred and fifty cubic feet per second. Ashtabula, Lake Ashtabula was at an elevation of twelve sixty-six and rising. Devil's Lake and all their surrounding lakes were higher than what we were at the beginning of the year. Devil's Lake Basin received nearly six inches of rains up to September. And everybody knows, there were common inches of snow throughout the basin, which had a significant amount of moisture in it, I don't remember the name of October, so. Were extremely wet.
Okay. Anything else on that? We got that covered?
Yeah.
Visitors and delegations, they've been on a justice commission. Paul, you want to promote your, uh?
Annual meeting, oh, thank you, Jeff, yeah. Our annual meeting is on next Wednesday, October twenty-third, at the college at eleven-thirty. Um, please come. We will be changing over of the gavel to the presidency and the outstanding chamber members announced Eric Spencer, the president and CEO of the Greater North Dakota Chamber is speaking. Um, so yes, we'd love to have you there.
Okay. Thank you. Any announcements? Oh, we want to take care of that.
Yeah. That's, that's for the bridge inspections that, that we approved.
We didn't approve signing that support?
No, she, Carrie put together the form.
Oh, so we have to approve that signing.
We just need to approve and sign it.
Move to.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the Grand County, Bents County shared underwater bridge inspection.
Second.
Got a second? All fair, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Sign both.
I was like, where?
Oh, darn it, oh, I don't know.
Sign them both.
Yeah.
Close the events.
Yeah. Anything else on announcements?
The, uh, the Heritage Center has got some upcoming events for Halloween, but I don't remember the dates.
I was not listening, it was too scary for me.
Yeah, uh, but they're, they're doing, uh, for adults, it's going to be something similar to a haunted house, but somehow a lot more terrifying than something.
Twenty-eight, I think?
Yeah. Uh, and then on Halloween itself, they're going to be doing children's activities and events too, so, a little bit of, uh, stuff for everybody, so that'll be good. Um, and, uh, library board, um, about a month ago, we decided to create a performance evaluation committee, subcommittee, uh, to look at how the library was performing. Um, and we decided to, uh, sort of formally adopt the stance that we're going to try to move the, uh, the library from the level that it currently is, uh, uh, in standing with the state, which is there's sort of three levels for state funding for libraries in North Dakota. Uh, the lowest level is developing, uh, the next level is excelling, and the third level is future focused. Uh, and so we're at the second level, um, we made the decision that we were going to try to start taking steps to get to that future focus level, uh, which would allow for, uh, more, potentially more funding from the state, uh, as well as, uh, being a better service to the community, so.
I didn't know there would be a level. I, I guess, and I'm not, Paul's mentioned, officials that work there at the Association of Home, and then went well, um, we, we, the DOT went well, so, we'll have to put our brick on.
We got that really nice day?
The one nice day we had.
Yeah.
Oh, Monday was nice. I booked up Monday night, came home and started party Tuesday, Monday too.
I think it was a good day. Congratulations.
The one, the one nice day we've had in a month.
Thank you, thank you. And Candy handed me this, Kevin Fieldson submitted it to her. Nick Richter, I suppose, told me this morning that he's going to retire then in November. Imagine he's been there, how many years? Thirty?
Forty, thirty plus.
Okay. Can you bring it up at the meeting and get a motion to advertise the fellow position?
So moved, we need to.
And a motion with second. Any other questions? All fair, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, anything else on announcements?
Oh, yeah, Friday's coming up on the twenty-ninth. Uh, we're looking for nonprofits looking to put up a booth for easy money for a few hours of work. We're really struggling to get some vendors, if that's what you want to use the word, so.
Any, any nonprofits or nonprofits?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Four-H?
Four-H is always on board, yeah.
Clubs, organizations, things like that?
Yep, it's over here. Yep. And a four-H is, is always on board. I mean, we get, they work from four to, four to eight different four-H groups.
Great.
And it has a huge crowd, I really, I really hate to not have it.
Yep.
But you know, it's kind of hard to do when you don't have.
What night is that, Mike?
The Tuesday, the twenty-ninth.
Oh, you're not on Halloween?
No, it's not on Halloween.
You can get candy on the twenty-ninth, the Friday, you can get candy on Halloween too.
But we have free cake, uh, there's dinner, I mean, it, uh, dinner, it's walking tacos usually, so we have concessions and, uh, free cake. Bonanza's is free, um, some of the, some of the booths are, are basically free. It, it's, it's very cheap entertainment if you have kids. You know, you can come and spend three hours with twenty bucks, you know, and your kid walks out with a bag of candy, so.
And it's great in your game.
It is, it is, it's, you know, and I never, ever thought it would be what it is. There's five to seven hundred kids coming through there.
I think you could use something for kids.
Yeah, it sounds like a really good idea.
Bush inside?
Yeah, push it, push it and see if you can find some people.
Yeah. Okay, any other announcements? Media has no announcements? Thank you for coming. Love to see you. We're adjourned, thank you.